Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this workshop meeting to order. Before you, you have an adoption of the agenda, proposed agenda. We're going to be talking about the New Bridge Street improvements and the update on the bio tower work at Sturgeon City. Mayor's not able to be with us tonight, been under the weather, sends his regrets, and Councilmember Warden is out of town. So, thank you for being here, and I'll turn it over to Richard to lead us in discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion to adopt the agenda before you...
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
I'll say goodbye by saying... That's his favorite motion.
It is.
That's right. Well, good evening. It's good to be back with you and to be talking about New Bridge Street. We want to give you an update, and this is not only an update, but it's also a recommendation on how we're going to move forward over the next several budgets. As you know, this past fall, the city staff worked, the engineering department and the people in Wally's Public Works area, they worked to install a section of new sidewalk. And that has been received very, very well. You can see the area in front of Johnson Drugs and down to the organic market and further down towards Boomtown. You can also see on the right-hand side, the brick pavers. Those were put in with underground pipes so that at a future date, when we underground the utilities, you'll already have the pipes there. So, we got off to a good start, and we've had very good feedback. Over the last 60 days, we've been doing a lot of study work. Study work included a topographic survey of the entire four blocks, everything from down at the old Iwo Jima Theater all the way up through the Freedom Fountain. Why was the topographic work important? Well, it's now surveyed, so we know the elevation of literally every front door, every curb stop, every catch basin, because with that, it now enables us to begin to actually design improvements. We did not have all of that work accomplished when we first started the sidewalk work, but using the surveyors, we were able to set the new curb line, because as you'll recall, we dug up everything. We didn't leave the old curb line. We took up the curb, all the sidewalks. So, by having the new survey data, it gives us the basis on which to now begin to design. We've also studied the stormwater system downtown. As you know, there are parts of the main street area here that the water flows very nicely downhill. There are other parts, especially down near Mr. Guy's Insurance Agency, where the sidewalks are relatively low, the front doors are low, and when we have heavy rains, we have problems with water actually getting into some of those buildings in that last block down there. We've examined the water and sewer system. We actually sent the video cameras through both systems to try to determine their condition. And we've also studied undergrounding utilities. And we have come up with the finalized streetscape design based upon meetings that we had with the business and property owners several months ago, and we tried to make sure that we've incorporated into that plan the assurance that there will be no impact or minimal impact to parking, and that we'll have a space where you can have delivery trucks operational. The topographic survey findings showed that the stormwater pipes were flat and in some case reversed. Now, water doesn't necessarily run uphill very carefully. So, when we looked at the stormwater and realized that many of the areas are flat or reversed, that gave us some clues as to why we've had a lot of flooding. The other thing is the sidewalk cross slopes are going to be a challenge. Now, if you think directly across the street from City Hall, where the art museum, where the art gallery is, and where the auto parts, you can visualize how steep that sidewalk is. From the curb line up to the door, the sidewalk goes up about 10 inches, and that's just in an eight-foot wide area. Other parts of the sidewalk, we have pretty decent slopes. But as you know, because of the Americans Disability Act, we can't just pour a sidewalk that's on a 45-degree angle. It has to be something that a person can utilize, especially if they're handicapped. The sewer system findings showed that the lines are structurally sound. Some of the joints do leak. They've been in place for decades. There are single-point repairs that have been completed. We believe that in the near future, we should put in a slip liner throughout the system. But the nice thing about that slip liner is you don't have to dig it up. You know, the surface is not really altered, so what you're going to be able to do is simply put in a liner inside the existing pipe. So, overall, on the sewer system, we have good news. The water system, though, if you notice at the bottom, bad news. The existing lines are old. We have a history of maintenance. They are located in the travel lanes. Now, the sewer lines are also in the travel lanes, but since we're not going to have to dig those up... But to replace the water lines, we are going to have to dig up a lot of the street surface. All lines in this four-block area need to be replaced. They don't have to be replaced this coming month, but if we are going to move forward with redeveloping the four blocks, you're either going to redevelop it and then dig it up, which none of us like to do, or we're going to have to dig it up first. And of course, we're going to, in the process, move and add hydrants, and those will be placed in the bulbouts or pedestrian areas. Overall, the water system came out bad news. On utility poles, Mr. Thomas asked me after the joint session with the county commission, he said, "Where are we going to get all the money to underground the utilities? That's like a million dollars." Well, actually, there's some good news here. Because the lines themselves are predominantly carrying power just to streetlights and traffic lights and not to the businesses, we have a relatively inexpensive underground system. Duke Power, who is the provider in this area, met with us probably six weeks or so ago, walked the entire four-block area, and they said, from their standpoint, "It's not an issue, and it will be nominal money." Now, the poles also carry cable and TV. I guess cable and TV are the same. Cable and telephone. So, we have also worked with those providers, and they also, they will charge us nominal fees, but you're probably looking at only $25,000 in cost to underground the entire four-block area. So, what you'll have is something that looks as nice as the front of City Hall, and all of these power poles will be eliminated. At the intersections, the power lines will remain, because we do not have in the budget the necessary money to put in mast arms. If you were going to put mast arms at this intersection here at the post office, Anthony, what would that be?
Two or 300,000?
The estimate we have is 140,000.
Okay, 140,000 just to put mast arms. So, that really, we can do that, it's just not part of our current plan. But here, we see overall good news. And again, as we're installing the sidewalks and putting in the brick section, we are going ahead to bury the underground conduit, even though it's what we call dark, meaning it has nothing inside it, so that when we do get to the point of putting the utilities underground, you won't have to dig anything up. You'll have to take up the poles, a little bit of work right where the poles are, a little bit of wiring there, but overall, the utilities are going to work well. This is very different than what we faced down Court Street. If you'll recall back probably five years ago, we looked at the area of Court Street right across from the Justice Complex. And because that was a heavy line with a lot of commercial carry, the cost there was almost a million dollars just to underground the utilities for electricity only. But here, we're very lucky. The poles primarily carry electricity to the streetlights. There are two or three businesses in the four-block area that do feed from New Bridge Street. All of the rest feed from the rear of their properties, so that's really good news. And of course, you can see that we've put in the brick pavers, and it has the pipes underground. Stormwater findings, there were two areas evaluated. Basically, what we did was to break New Bridge Street into two parts, from Hewitt all the way down to Warlick and from Bay Shore back to Hargette. It evaluated the capacity only. The results indicate the system is undersized. And if you will remember, we said earlier, in some areas, it is flat, and in other areas, it's actually reversed. This is the area from the Iwo Jima back up towards Hewitt. I don't expect you to be able to read everything here, but what you will see, this is the existing system. And what we will need to do is to replace a significant amount of the system that is actually on New Bridge Street. So, almost every line that is shown in yellow or blue, at a point in time, we will need to replace those in order to move forward with the streetscape. If you look at the area back up this way, and this one really is one of those that, this is an NC State drawing, there's no question about this, but you can see, we have a lot of clouds, we have a lot of junction boxes. At the end of the day, the area from the post office back this way, all the way back to the creek on Hargette, needs to be replaced. This is an area, the red area to the right of the graphic, that would be DOT work. Everything on New Bridge Street would of course be the city's responsibility, because New Bridge is now our ownership, not the DOT. Anthony and others are working with the DOT on this. We do believe that some of this work can be accomplished without actually replacing all of the pipes through there. Stormwater, option one is to improve capacity. Option two is no change. Option one means we're going to upsize the pipes, or we could put in parallel pipes. Now, we're currently evaluating that. The current system is undersized. We know that the current system in some places lays too flat or reversed. So, your option would be to put in twin pipes. Leave the pipe in the ground that's there and put in a twin pipe. The other is to dig it all up and put it all in correctly. And I will tell you, it's our thought from a staff standpoint that we do it the right way. Dig it all up, because if you can imagine having, let's say, twin 24-inch pipes laying side by side and a junction box feeding both of them, it just doesn't work. So, while it might be cheaper from a pipe cost, it's not cheap from a labor cost. You know, once you dig up, you might as well just keep digging, because the cost is in setting up, in the equipment rental, and in the actual labor. It's just a better idea to replace the entire thing. So, our recommendation here is storm sewer is bad news, and the ideal is to upsize all the pipes. We would most likely do just the phase that is down from Hewitt all the way down to Warlick, and then at a future time, do the other part from the post office back up this way. Now, when you look at the street itself, you know, there hasn't been a lot of impact so far on the travel surface. This is what the neighborhood meetings with the property owners have really come up to support. You'll notice, again, we have four lanes with angle parking. This, you will have two lanes with a center median, but if you'll notice the crosshatch area right under the word "new," you'll find this concept all the way through the four-block area. And what is that striped area for? It's so that when you go from four lanes down to two, you will still have place for the UPS truck, the up truck, the pizza delivery man, the whatever, you know, the auto parts delivery place, they can pull in there and they can unload safely. The other thing that it allows people to do, although I think the chief would tell you that it's not technically legal, we do have some people who will, whoops, wrong way, who will notice the yellow line, and they will do a U-turn across the yellow line. Technically, you're not supposed to do that, but we don't issue many traffic tickets for that. But the same thing can actually occur here if someone wanted to. So, the concept will be to improve the crosswalks. You can see the nice pedestrian bulbouts at the corner there at Warlick. You can see the landscaping in the middle. And all of the landscaping will come out of the sidewalks. If you remember the pictures at the very beginning, there at Johnson Drugs. Instead of having the crepe myrtles as part of the sidewalks, the sidewalks will now be 10 feet, 12 feet in some places wide with no interruptions, and then your landscaping will be at the corner bulbouts, pedestrian areas, and then in the center. And the landscaping, of course, will have to be a low-maintenance landscape. Most likely, it will be crepe myrtles and nandinas and other things that will last year after year. Obviously, we will put in some flowering plants, as you can see down in the lower-left corner there in front of Mr. Riggs surveying. But the concept is this concept. As you move up the street, you will notice, this is from Hewitt all the way up to Bay Shore, and you can see the same concept continuing. And then here in front of City Hall, you can see again that we will have the same concept of landscaping. We did look at putting a pedestrian crossing directly at the front door of City Hall, crossing over towards the church. The problem with that is the elevation of the sidewalk at City Hall just doesn't work in order to accomplish that. So, the crossing that's there in front of the art gallery and also in front of the alley, that will continue to be. You will notice further down the street, in front of the filling station, we will be putting in some nice landscaping there, and then at the Freedom Fountain, we will have an area where you'll have parking. But that's the concept for New Bridge Street. What we would like to do next, in order to move forward, this is the easiest area because of the topographic work. This is the easiest area for the next group of sidewalks. It's basically from the bicycle gallery all the way down to Hewitt. And so, this spring, we hope to have a contract where we will proceed to take up all the sidewalks and do the same thing that we have done over in front of Johnson Drugs. Here is a picture of that area. Now, this is where the indigestion starts. This is not free. You're looking at a project that is somewhere between 1.3 and 1.6 million. Obviously, that's an engineer's estimate. We will do this under competitive bids. We will have to have design work for the storm drains and the water systems and for a lot of the areas that we'll be putting in the medians. Construction administration and a contingency. So, you're looking at a significant investment. I'm just glad that we're not facing the million dollars that was estimated to underground the utilities. Where are we going to get the money? Well, fortunately, there are several funds that can address this. All of the stormwater work, the piping and the curbing, can be paid for by the stormwater fund. The sidewalks can come from either the Four Cent or from Powell Bill. The streetscape will have to come from your Four Cent initiative. The water lines and sewer work will have to come from Water and Sewer Fund, and the paving, of course, will come from Powell Bill. We don't recommend that we do this in one phase, though. The design of the work itself, you can see, to scope it out 30 days, to get the design work, about 120 days, permitting, bid advertisements and everything, if all the money was in place, you really wouldn't be ready to go for almost eight months anyway. And that's why we want to move forward with another block of sidewalk, so that the merchants and property owners downtown don't feel like that we got to start and we've abandoned the project, because the design work is going to take, as it shows, eight months. So, we would like to have something positive going on during the time that we are proceeding with the design work. When you look at the moving forward schedule, one block of sidewalk, which we've discussed, the bicycle gallery in that area, in the current budget, and that money is currently budgeted. The design and bid work, we have money in this year's budget for designing it, but the actual construction would have to come in probably two, if not three, fiscal years. So, you're looking at design, a little bit of additional work this year. After July 1, getting into the heavy design and getting it out to bid, and then construction work over several fiscal years. It's something that, you know, hopefully, y'all believe is an investment that we should continue to pursue. I will also mention to you, though, that when you take these funds and you put them in this four-block area, it simply means that other things are not going to be accomplished on the same schedule that you might like. We're not asking this evening for you to approve anything. Very shortly, actually after your next workshop, Deanna will be presenting to your capital improvement program for next year. You will see in the capital improvement program choices. For example, if we want to move forward with the next phase of Northeast Creek Park, that's $450,000 to $500,000. If, on the other hand, you feel like that this project should take precedence over that for one year, not abandoning that project, but because you are doing major work at Northeast Creek this year, maybe you take a year off and you direct the funds to these four-block areas. Those are discussions and decisions that you'll be making through the budget process. Moving forward, replacement of the water lines are needed. The stormwater improvements are essential. The new sidewalks, the streetscape improvements, and then eventually, street resurfacing. This is the program that you should consider regardless of a time period. If we're ever going to have New Bridge Street look any different than it looks today, there has to come a point where we say, "Okay, here is the schedule, and at least you have begun." And I certainly commend you, because I will tell you, as I walk up and down the street, I'm no longer asked by the merchants, "When are y'all going to do something?" The question now is, "When are you going to do our block?" So, what we have done, what you have funded and directed us to do this past fall, is receiving very positive, very positive feedback from the merchants. That's the update on New Bridge. What part would you like to have further discussion on?
Well, I'll open it up for any discussion or questions that anyone may have at this point.
The replacement of the water line, is that just based on a supposition of age, or is there a history of leaks, or both?
Wally, why don't you come join us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's both. The water line in this area is a challenge. I think a lot of it is AC, asbestos cement, and it's very brittle. And one of the places in particular, we've had a lot of challenges, is right in front of Mr. Riggs's office. I think we've been in there three times alone, within probably a 20-foot area or a 30-foot area, and we've had others along the street that we've also had challenges with. And there is a water line on both sides of the street as part of the challenge.
There's a budget amendment on tonight's meeting agenda. It's taking 106,000 out of water sewer, putting it into this project. What is that going to accomplish?
It will actually begin the design work?
Yes. For the water? Yes.
Of course, the water and sewer, the funding associated would be used for that portion of the project.
Right, because it's coming from the water sewer, going into this project.
That's correct.
So, I was wondering what water sewer is getting out of it.
And when we present the capital improvement sheets related to this project, you'll see that the different funding sources are broken down and estimates from each fund.
Yeah, stormwater, again, the funding sources, the stormwater fund will probably bear the largest single proportion, because you are talking about, obviously, digging up the streets, and they'll be paying for all of the stormwater pipes and all of the new curbing. So, that will probably, you know, I don't have a breakout, but you will see that. I would guess that you're probably talking $500,000 out of stormwater budget for these four blocks.
And if I may add, the Powell Bill portion for streets, that can only be used for the area outside of the utility work. So, if we dig down and replace the water line, the water and sewer fund is responsible for replacement of the water line, of course, bringing the trench back up to grade, and then repaving, because you cannot use Powell Bill to repave a utility cut.
Any other questions?
The, I'm a little leery about the angle parking one lane, but I guess it's something that... Any other questions?
The, I'm a little leery about the angle parking one lane, but I guess that's something you're going to have to live with to get the other amenities.
Well, you know, the merchants were very strong in saying, do not lose parking spaces. We looked at, we looked at parallel parking. We did find two people in Jacksonville who actually have cars that park themselves parallel, and two other people who claimed that they could park parallel. One of the things we are going to have to look at, though, on the angle parking, is potentially flattening the angle. Now, what would you accomplish there? Because so many people have high-profile trucks or now vans, if you're in an angled parking space, it is very difficult to back out safely. Glenn, can you move us back to one of the diagrams? Maybe I can get back very quickly. Okay. The travel lane between the median and the back of the vehicle is going to be much wider than normal, and we will stripe the street so that there's a four-foot area between the back of the vehicle and the travel lane. That way, you can begin to back out and at least get a degree of visibility that you currently don't have. So, you know, you will be going down from four lanes down to two, but the center median is not taking up the entire two lanes that you're giving up. So hopefully, we will be adding a safety dimension by possibly flattening the angle for the parking and having that four-foot area where people can back out and at least get a start.
Great presentation, Richard. I think that, you know, again, I've been asked three or four times by several businesses there in terms of when we're going to continue the work. So I'm, you know, as part of the person that served on that downtown committee, I'm certainly looking forward to this and looking forward to its continued, you know, growth and not just one part this year and maybe another part four years down the road. And that doesn't accomplish anything. We're either got to do it or we don't. So I'm happy to see that you're at least trying to move the whole package forward so that we can make it look attractive to potential, not only current business owners, but future potential business owners that can visualize what we're trying to do and take the risk to come down there and open a business. And I think this is the right way to do it. One thing you didn't mention was street lighting. Is this anything like the street lights?
Yes, a good point. All of the street lighting, of course, when you're underground, it will be putting in decorative streetlights. And the new lights that we have in front of City Hall will be the theme all the way down. Those can be rented under the tariff or the rate structure from Florida Power and Light, from Duke Power, and probably from Florida Power and Light if you're in Florida.
So basically, next step is we'll see it and discuss it on our CIP whether we want to move it forward or not.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I know normally, in a workshop, you do not take public comment, but there is, I noticed one gentleman had a question.
Yes, sir, I have no issues. Go ahead, sir. You can ask your question.
Do the improvements only consist of the front of the buildings? What about the rear?
The plan, the question for the television audience, the question is, are we doing anything on the rear of the buildings? And the answer is, at this point, we've only looked at the front. We're not opposed to looking at the rear. I know some of the alleys, especially there around the post office, the alley that goes behind the bicycle gallery that goes down towards Hewarth, certainly improvements could be made. But no, the plan at this point only is on the street frontage. The other thing that we want to stress, a lot of communities, when they do these, they set up a front-foot assessment for the business and property owners. City is not proposing that.
What?
Pardon me?
A front-foot assessment.
Almost like an assessment district, special tax.
A fee.
A fee. Sorry. All of this work is being proposed to be absorbed in the city's budget, and we are not proposing that the property owners be charged anything for this work.
Thank you.
When you improve the water and sewer, do the rear, it don't tie into the front? Don't we have city manholes that's coming like right behind the church building on Newbridge? Those manholes and stuff, don't they tie into the front manholes under the wall?
Well, let's do this on specific points like that.
The staff can talk with you about that. But we are doing in all the sidewalks, though, we're installing brand-new water connections from the building, not just from the curb, from the building all the way to the curb under the new sidewalk. And we're also installing new meters. And again, that's not at any cost to anybody except the system. So we can get with you after the meeting and talk specifically about locations.
Great, thank you, Richard. Okay, next item on the agenda is the update on the bio tower work at Sturgeon City. Thank you, Wally.
As most of you are aware, the Sturgeon City was the sewer plant for the city for decades. And I believe, Gwyn, I believe that Glenn told me that about 1980, the sewer system was upgraded by installing a bio tower. That is a, basically, a huge building that is about 30 feet tall and about 40 feet square. And it was filled with plastic medium, and the effluent would trickle down through that, and the various critters that lived on that plastic medium would help digest the effluent. With Sturgeon City moving forward with the building, it came to our attention that if we're ever going to empty that building, the bio tower, which is no longer in service, that we needed to do it before we started paving parking lots and putting in a lot of landscaping. So I'm very pleased to tell you that your city crews over the last week have done a phenomenal job. And at this point, I believe Glenn and his staff have a short video that we'd like to There were over 100 truckloads of those little plastic cups that were hauled out. And again, if we had not done it now, we really would have had a difficult time finding a way without damaging the substantial investments you're making down in Sturgeon City. So we took advantage of a staff with a lot of imagination. You saw the large openings in the walls. The building itself is held together by the columns that are structural. The areas that were opened up were nothing but panels, because there was no pressure inside. I mean, the water would trickle down through these cups, but it's not like a holding cell where you have to have, you know, real stability, where you have hydrostatic pressure trying to blow them out. So they simply took the backhoe and hit that, hit those panels, and they, literally, within 45 minutes, they had opened up three of them. And, you know, one scoop at a time, dug it out, and then eventually, they even put a small piece of equipment inside the facility. And then to finish it off, they pressure washed the entire thing. So it is amazing. I would encourage you, in the next week or so, probably the next month or so, to actually go down there and see it for yourself.
What are we going to do with that building?
Okay. Well, the Sturgeon City master plan calls for certain uses of the building. The funds for those interior uses of that are currently not identified. We are going to be bringing you some concepts, though, for the top. If you remember in the video, which, you know, you may have a hard time recognizing it, the top was never closed. It was an open area. It had catwalks. But you can now look all the way down, and we have secured the staircase, so someone can't get up there. But you can see the opening. The areas that are grooved, those are simply the panels that were there, and we just simply knocked the panels out. You can see up top, he'll probably get us up top in a minute, but in the up-top area, you see how open that is? We do have opportunities to decide, are we going to set it something up like viewing stations? I mean, when you get up there 35 feet in the air and you're over almost 50 feet above the water in Wilson Bay, the view is absolutely phenomenal. So maybe it's something that we can look at and come up with John Sawyer, he's the architect we've been using. I've asked John, the next time he comes up, to meet me there, to begin to brainstorm what we might bring back to y'all as far as some options. I would not want to see us tear the building down. That building is still very structurally sound with all of the major components that you see there. So hopefully, we can bring you some ideas, and maybe in the next year or so, we can fund another major improvement down at Sturgeon City.
Great job. I know that saved us a lot of money.
It saved a lot of money. And again, while it did take Pete and his crews and Johnny Stiltner and his crews and the people with Alan Baker and his folks, I mean, it was a real team effort. But at the end of the day, it had to be done, and now it's behind us. I'm proud of what staff did.
With that view down here, it might be a good place for a pizza at the top of the world.
Yeah. I know someone.
Mild pie pizza.
Thank you, great presentation.
One thing I would like to mention, it's not on the agenda, but just a quick update. You will recall roughly a month ago, we were here to give a discussion with the YMCA. It had been our intention and schedule to have a YMCA update for you this evening. What I can tell you is that the work is progressing nicely. The YMCA is working with an architect, the architect is working with the staff. We anticipate that probably 30 days, so that would be two meetings from now, they would be in a position of bringing you back some detailed analysis. But I know a lot of people may have tuned in tonight thinking that they would hear the YMCA report. It's still ongoing, and hopefully, in another 30 days, it will be on your schedule. That concludes all the items we had, so.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody have anything?
Move your chair.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.